Okay, we're recording now.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. So, welcome, everyone. This is the 155th meeting of the ISO Board of Trustees. And today, we have a short agenda. We will be meeting basically Eduardo from the chapter advisory council, and then we will be meeting the Church of the IAB and IETF. So with the given agenda, any conflicts of interest? Okay, seeing none, let me note that Heather sent her regrets, but all the rest of the trustees are here. So we have further due, Eduardo, the floor is yours.
Thank you. If I can, my presentation is very short and to the point, so I send it to Kevin.
Kevin will be sharing it shortly. There you go.
Well, thank you today to all of you for having me again. I have a very short presentation. We can go to the next slide. Basically, I'm going to go over the team members again, and some of the team members are going to stay, they're going to be in the 2021 Chapter Advisory Council. Again, a little bit about the nomenclature, just to, you know, when I talk, you know what I'm talking about. I want to show you some of the numbers that I put together for the 2020, what, you know, looking ahead for 2021, and that will end my presentation. Next one, please. Well, you have seen this before. You have seen this before. There are five of us that have been elected to the next Chapter Advisory Council for 2021. I, you know, I'm not doing this next year. I want new people, new blood to come in, and I believe the elections have been finished. This committee will meet with the new team in the January timeframe. Then we will pass all the information and, you know, whatever we have to pass to the next team, because we have been working on things that we didn't finish this year. So that's what is there. So, next one, please. And you can interrupt me anytime, please. So, like I mentioned last time, when we say the Shack, we're talking about the Chapter Advisory Council. We also use the full Shack when we represent, you know, we want to say that includes all the delegates, only chapter council delegates, not chapter delegates, but council delegates from the chapters. And when we put an SC at the end, it will be Chapter Advisory Sitting Committee, which is a committee that I'm sharing now. And we are nine elected delegates in this committee. And like I mentioned, we settle on the standard of when we send advice to you, we're going to put the board advice, the year, months, and day that we started working on the advice. If there is one more advice, if we're working on more than one advice that day, then we will see number one, number two, number three, and so forth, then the title of the advice. So going forward, that's the way you're going to, you're going to start receiving that advice whenever there is advice to give to the board. So, next one, please. So, these are 2020 numbers. I went around and I look, I took some notes and did some average. We met this year once a month, or we met 41 times during this year. We didn't meet during December. In December, we're meeting, we have been doing a special meeting to vote on amendments to the Shack, to the Chapter Advisory Charter, which I go over, you know, very briefly in my next slide. But, you know, if you look at the right of the 11-months meeting, the 6.72 number that you see there is the average attendance to those meetings. And one of the things that we had problem with is we need a quorum of, you know, we are nine, and the charter set us a quorum for seven out of nine. So it's kind of a super majority every time you meet to do regular work. So one of the amendments that we have put in the charter is to bring this down to five, which would be like 50% plus one. And even though we got, you know, this is just an average, I just wanted to show that we never got to the seven. Most of the time, we never get to the seven slash nine quorum, which make our deliberations more inefficient, because then we have to do things offline, instead of doing the old discussions and decisions and doing the meeting. So, you know, we just want to make things easier for the next team to come, that is coming in. Unfortunately, with the pandemic, we have only one full Shack meeting. After the pandemic started, there was not that much work that, you know, there was no reason for meeting with them other than because we didn't have any thing to provide in addition to the advice that we just provided during this year. So, and the total advice that we have sent, that we did send this year was about, it was, it wasn't about, was exactly six. And it has to do all with the PIR sale. Those are the only ones. But we have other ones that are coming in, but we didn't finish this year in, you know, in having reached a consensus on what is it, what we wanted to put in the advice. So, next one, please.
Eduardo, can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, on that previous slide, I'm kind of surprised. Presumably, all of the people on the Steering Committee, you know, ran for the Steering Committee and volunteered to be on it. So why do you think that if, you know, like, if people presumably want to be on the Steering Committee, why is it so difficult to get them to show up for meetings? And a related question is, I see that 32 chapters showed up for the full meeting, which means that 80 chapters did not. And I'm wondering, what engagement have you had with those other 80 chapters? Because I'm getting the impression that there's a very small group of people involved, and it's hard, it's hard to accept the advice as being from all of the chapters. If we're repeatedly hearing that actually it's a very small group of people, and you're having trouble even getting engagement from the ones who said they wanted to be engaged.
Well, for the Shack meeting, the full Shack meeting, the quorum is only 19.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying, you know, we have a super majority that did not show up. So I'm just wondering, what engagement have you had with the?
Are you talking about our steering committee meetings?
Well, actually, I'm asking you two questions. One is, the Steering Committee presumably is all people who are interested. So why is it so difficult to arrange meetings when they can actually be there? I mean, like for our board meeting, we generally get at least 11 of the 12 members. And the related question is, what engagement have you had with the 80 chapters who didn't come to the meeting? And presumably, who aren't on the Steering Committee either?
No, I cannot, my speakers are not, or is your microphone, but I cannot understand where you put the second question. If you can repeat it.
Eduardo, you want me to restate the question, or?
Yes, please, because it has to do with the microphone.
Yeah, so Kevin, maybe you can go into the video for a second while we discuss this. So John had two questions. The first one was that you said that basically the average attendance was, you know, below seven members in the Steering Committee. So he's wondering why Steering Committee members, which are supposed to be, who are supposed to be committed to be there, why it's so difficult to have them to show up for a meeting?
Reason, I don't know, people have many, many reasons, but, you know, we have one member that never, it just came only once. And that was the delegate from the Argentina chapter, sorry to say that. But she showed up only once. So, you know, that alone brought the outrage down. Because usually, you can get seven out of nine. But, you know, you just need, missing three people, two, one, two, three, three people, and then you cannot, you don't have quorum. And I don't know why, when this was made up, you know, for regular meetings, we have to have a super majority. I understand for advice and things like that, you may want to do things like that. The only super majority that is needed in the charter that really needs it is for the charter amendments, which is something that I'm going to talk about later.
Yeah. So, but anyway, that was.
The answer, I'm sorry, the answer is, I don't know, people, you know, we do the regular reminders. You know, people know way ahead of time when the meetings are, and people will show.
They just don't show up. So that was John's first question. John's second question was, and there you have listed 32 chapters participated in the full Chapter Advisory Council meeting. So he's wondering that where are the remainder of, I mean, like the remaining 80 chapters? Did you engage with them somehow, or they just didn't participate? Or, so that was the question.
Well, usually, those meetings, you don't see that many numbers. Usually, you see 20, 25 chapters in those meetings. And that has been like that for many years, perhaps. The 32 is because we push people to come into the meeting, because we were dealing with the amendments to the charter. Okay, so we push people to come in, because we have to have members but proxies to see if we could get the two-thirds. And I will explain that, I can explain that now, I can explain that later.
Yeah. And I mean, John's question is going, actually, the actual question is that whether, with that level of participation, you can think that your advice, and when you talk on behalf of the chapters, if you are really talking on behalf of the chapters, or only on behalf of a small part of the community? That was where John was trying to get at.
Okay, you mean when we send advice to you?
Or any discussions you have, in general?
Well.
And by the way, John, you can continue talking to Eduardo. I don't need to be in the middle of my career.
I put on my headset, so I hope I am easier to hear now.
Yeah, well, when the steering committee talks, it talks because of the steering committee, but nowadays, an advice that have been sent formally, then we talk from the chapters itself, okay? Now, like I mentioned before, you know, you can have 19, you know, we can do a full chat meeting. You get 19 people there as a quorum, and if there is consensus on what we are proving there, that those 19s are the ones that approve the advice.
No, but we are not talking formally. I guess John is talking like, you know, if, I mean, your opinion on that, really. If you see that, you know, in the Chapter Advisory Council, basically, only a few chapters and a few individuals are engaging. And if so, we probably need to address that somehow, or if you think that's healthy enough, and the situation is good.
There are about 10 chapters that they don't have even delegates to the Chapter Advisory Council. 10 or 15, I don't know. Why is that? I mean, it's a matter of signing somebody to the Chapter Advisory Council, and their chapters are active, but they don't have a chapter delegates.
Yeah, and we mentioned to include that in some type of health measurement, right, at some point?
Yeah, but I found out that the, and I have found this the other day, and I'm pretty sure there are chapters like that. And is that even though if you have a chapter delegate, you know, to the council, but if you forget to enter that information in the Member Novice System, you know, we have a list of the chapter officers. If the chapter delegate is not allocated, is not identified there, then what gets pushed, is pulled from the system, is what is there. So you might, it happens to me with the Ecuador chapter, which I said, you know, you have a delegate. He said, yes, I am a delegate. I said, but you are not in the list. I said, how come? He said, well, because you are not in the Member Nova. You have to go to the Member Nova and activate, you know, put yourself as a chapter delegate. And he did, and he works, he works fine. So there might be some of that there. But that's an issue that I think regional, the regional directors or how you should address, because it's part of the performance evaluations that they do. You know, where is the chapter, and it's one of them. It's a question that, you know, have you have, identify a delegate? So I, you know, not seeing it, it doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you, Eduardo. I think Olga had a question. Olga, please.
Thank you, Eduardo. And it's a general comment, what I can hear from my friends in chapters in Latin America. And maybe it's an explanation that why they don't show up, which I think John's comment is quite relevant. The amount of activities that the chapters need to do to get this status and have some financial support to pay the taxes and all the things that they have to pay to be registered at the national level, it's overwhelming. They have to participate in many meetings, in online meetings, and they have to organize themselves events. If they don't do that, it doesn't matter if the event is organized with other people, because that doesn't count. So you know that, Eduardo, and it's volunteer work. So my take from that is some people at the board level of the chapters don't get very well what's the role of the Chapter Advisory Committee, and why should they devote time for that? Especially talking about Ana Belzec Nelo, which is the president of the Argentina chapter. She has been appointed to a very, very high-level work now. She is director of the National Telecommunications Company Arsat. So she's very busy, very, very busy. Some of us are helping her with some of these online meetings. But it's volunteer work. So maybe there's a work that you could do with the chapters in trying to let them understand what's the role of the Shack. And I tried to appoint people and participate more, because what John is saying, it's really important. So what's the relevance if they are not participating? Apart from the fact that numbers of the forum and all of that, which is a formality. And maybe you could check with, with the rules that just established for chapters, this overwhelming amount of activities, because it's too much for volunteer work. Some of our, okay, but that's too much. And as you know, and you know that, many people want to participate, but then very few work, really, because it's time of their own. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we are running behind schedule, but I mean, this was an interesting conversation, Eduardo. Can you wrap up in a couple of minutes?
Yes, 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 yes. If I can see the.
Yeah, so Kevin, can we go back to Eduardo's presentation? Yeah, thank you, perfect.
Next, next, next one, please. A second, nothing, you know, we went through the, you know, we have a meeting the 24th of November with the Shack. Those are the 32 that went there, because we wanted to vote on the amendments on the chapter. So between proxies, because we are obligated to get proxies for people that are not coming, and the people that attended, it was a total of 43 chapters, you know, but attendance was 32. So we couldn't, we didn't have the two-thirds happening, so we couldn't do anything. So the meeting was very short, 15 minutes gone. We're having another one. We're going to have another try in December '22. And this time, we are particularly pushing to every chapter. Believe it or not, people don't answer my emails, and we just keep sending, and sending, and sending, and sending. So we're planning to go different routes to get the delegate to send us a proxy, you know. So we'll see what happened in December '22. But if by December the 20th, we don't get the 74 proxies that we need, we're going to move that meeting. It's going to, we don't want to, we're going to have that meeting until we have the 74 proxies. Because we want to make sure that whatever they vote, yes or no, we want to have the 74 chapters with the proxies in. Otherwise, it would be a waste of time. It would be a waste of time. I mean, that's, so next, next one, next one. This is the last one. So coming, you know, this is looking ahead, the, you know, the things that we were talking about are things that are related to the membership system and things that are happening with the up in and up out. Maybe, you know, some of the things have been fixed, other ones are being worked on. So this is, you know, like an ongoing thing. And this is something that we're going to pass to the next team to see if they want to move along with, you know, or wherever the work we're doing there. So that's it. That's my presentation, and I want to thank you for allowing me this time to talk to you about the chapter.
Thank you, Eduardo. Before you pass the torch, we will be meeting again, I guess, or when is the next election?
No, no, the election already passed.
Oh, nobody. Okay.
Yeah, it's just there, the new team has been elected, officially elected.
Okay, I had missed that, actually. Okay, interesting. So this is the last time we meet with you?
Yeah, I can always call you, you know, say hello.
Yeah, yeah, of course. No, I mean, that's, of course. We can always do that. But no, I mean, then, you know, I mean, Eduardo, yes, I wanted to thank you for, you know, all, you know, this period that you've been basically leading the Chapter Advisory Council. And, you know, we've been basically having a lot of meetings and a lot of offline conversations and stuff like that. So I think I'm speaking on behalf of the whole board, you know, to thank you for all the efforts and all the energy you have put into the role, and it's been a pleasure to work with you. Even though not, you know, we didn't agree on everything all the time, but I think that's healthy disagreements, and I think we took it, you know, professionally. So I think that was all productive.
Okay, well, you know, I'm not disappearing, oh, I'm sorry.
You are disappearing.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm not disappearing. I'm still involved with the work, with the work that we do in ISO here in Puerto Rico and in general. So whenever you need my help, I'm here.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you, Eduardo. Thanks a lot. Take care of yourself.
Right, thanks again. Bye bye.
Thank you. Okay, Mira, sorry, we were a few minutes late. So can you, can you hear me?
Yes, no problem.
Excellent. Thank you. And thank you, Mira, for sending the report in advance. That was very useful for trustees to basically process it before this meeting. So you want to present it, or you want to go straight into Q and A? It's up to you, Mira.
I mean, that was just like a few slides summarizing the most important points. I can tell you a little bit more and quickly go through it, except you don't want that, like however you want.
No, let's do that, yeah.
Okay, then let's just move on to the next slide. So that slide was only there. This is the same slide than last time, just so you have some faces, and you can see somebody else and me. But it's still the same people. Next time, we'll change in March. And then the report, there's even more information from the last IETF meeting. The report is online, like there's all the kind of logistics in there. We had like one appeal that we processed, we had like one appointment. There's actually new appointments since we created the report. And now, for example, we reappointed Colin Perkins as the IETF chair. There's some information about programs documents, like one thing I wanted to mention quickly is that we also send a reply to ICANN's draft final report. And we mentioned there, this discussion about private use of top-level domains. And there's ongoing discussion about this and further coordination with ICANN here, in case that's something that's interesting for you, I can tell you more. And then there's a second link here, which is the slide to the open meeting. So that was a new thing we established at the last IETF meeting to get better in touch with the community. And that's also where we report more about the technical work we're doing. So if you're interested in that part, you can check out those slides. So that's the formal part. Then on the next slide, I want to attention, put your attention on that we did restructure a little bit in the IAB, in that we realized that the thing, how we organize our work is in programs. And we figured actually that we have two different kinds of programs. One kind of programs where we actually do technical work, where we see like a very concrete problem that is not well addressed in the IETF, and we think that needs more attention, and we want to like to do some work about this. And then we have these other kind of programs where we do more administrative things. So we have a group of experts that can help us out. So we do separate these things now, and we structured ourselves, just like, so if those terms come to your attention in future, that you're not confused about this. And then especially about the technical programs, we have two programs at the moment. One about evolvability, deployability, and maintainability. That's also something I told you about last time. So that program is now officially established. And there have been slides in the IAB open meeting, if you want to learn more. And then there's still the Model T program about the Internet Threat Model, which is also ongoing activities. And then I think the last, next slide is my last slide already. Yeah, so this is also something I told you about last time, that we were planning for this workshop to get some input about what happened during the start of the crisis. And we actually did have this workshop just before the IETF meeting, so that's now like four weeks ago. The idea here was to collect some information about what actually happened during this period to get a better understanding what operators did, what did application developers do, which actions were taken, what were the pain points, and also what's the lesson learned for the future. I, from my side, can say it was a really interesting discussion we had. We got a lot of measurement data, and it was really good to see all this measurement data together, because like I think everybody on its own only looked like at this one part, but you really need to see all the data to get the whole picture. Like, we kind of concluded that, as you all know, it kind of went well. It was like no major outtake or whatever, but they are probably like side points in some areas and whatever, which really need future work, more work. So all the papers, position papers we get are online, all the sessions have been recorded, and you can watch them on YouTube, and there's a report coming up. And I don't think I have more slides. So in that case, I'd be open for questions.
Yeah, thank you, Mira. And that was useful with all the pointers, so that, you know, we could expand basically on everything. So Kevin, if you can go back into the video mode, and Ted, please, go ahead.
Just a quick question on the, on the posting of the videos. Have you gotten any indication whether there's kind of further engagement with the post-session videos outside of the workshop itself? Are you getting reasonable views of those?
And I mean, like, I can probably check the YouTube statistics. I didn't do that. And we didn't get any further direct input. We also mentioned the workshop at the IAB open meeting had some discussion there. There's still the workshop meeting, this where the participants are subscribed. There's also not much activity right now, but as we're working on the report, probably, I guess, some of the discussions might come up again. Also, something I want to mention is that this workshop was virtually, of course. And we had one session on Monday, one on Wednesday, and one on Friday. And there was actually, it was actually nice, because we had some email discussion in between, and we could prepare for the next session, because there was always a day in between. So that worked out really, really nice for the discussion we had there.
Thanks, thanks for that. I was just hoping, especially for the observabilities section, I know that there were a number of different comments that came up during the later IETF that pointed back to that, just trying to see whether maybe that had gone further.
I mean, the timing was, or like, maybe it was good, I don't know. But like, everybody was busy with the meeting afterwards, and now we are liking a little bit with the report. So hopefully, this is catching up again. Yeah.
Yeah, but good idea, Ted monetizing videos as a revenue stream is really good.
If you get, if the ID gets 10,000 subscribers, then you can start to consider monetizing it. But I would personally be someone who's done it.
We'll take it from there. Well, it please.
Yeah, I mean, we had a, thank you indeed for, Mira, for your presentation. We had earlier a session with OMAC, and one of their workshops was about internet resiliency. And I really wonder if there were any overlaps or any interesting discussions that members of these various groups come together, especially with their corporate establishments that are mainly responsible for keeping the internet alive.
Yes, we also did discuss resilience. I think we mentioned it more as something that we need further work on, rather than having a solution for it. We, I think in the workshop, it was interesting to actually get some of the people who have been working behind the scenes and report back and being able to ask questions. But we also noticed that probably in future, you know, that just relying on such a workshop is not the right tool. Somehow, we need to get this discussion going more.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mira. Any, any further questions before we move on?
I just a quickie, are there any workshops coming up that might, that we might want to pay attention to?
Yeah, no, we don't have any workshop planned at the moment. I'm planning to restart the discussion about next workshop right now, basically. Okay, so next time, I might be able to report something.
Okay.
Perfect, excellent. Okay, thanks a lot, Mira. Again, thanks a lot for sending the material beforehand, for the links, and for basically, you know, joining the session.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day, Mira.
You too. Enjoy your meeting.
Thanks. Okay, Alyssa, thanks, thanks for joining. So it was, yeah, great to have you here. Okay, this, this video is moving. Okay, now, now I know where you are again. So do you want to kind of, you know, present something, or you want to go straight into Q and A, or?
Yeah, I have, I have just a very small number of slides.
Okay, excellent. So Kevin, please, if you could share that.
Actually, I don't have Alyssa's slides.
Yeah, apologies that I did not send in advance. Give me one second, and I will bring them up.
Yeah, because I didn't remember seeing them. I thought I was becoming amnesic or something like that.
They may have been created today. Let's see.
By the way, while it, when you are muted, we hear cracking noises and stuff like that, so. Okay, yeah, yeah, exactly. It's like a strong cricket.
No idea.
No, really, it's.
I'll do some testing on it.
Yeah.
Oh, wow. Okay, I apologize that Zoom is not allowed to share.
Oh.
But perhaps I can just give you the link, Kevin, because I think these are accessible to anyone.
Yeah, if you send it, maybe I can share, or Kevin can share, or someone. Okay, let me, let me go there. Okay, let me see if I can share my screen. Okay, can you guys see that?
Yeah, that's great.
Yes, okay, good. So I will, I will drive them. You just say next slide.
Yeah, so I know we only have a couple of minutes, and it's here at the end of your meeting. I thought I would just focus on one item, which is, you know, how's the IETF doing in light of COVID in terms of participation, because I thought that might be something of interest for this group. Because I thought that might be something of interest for this group. So during the last IETF meeting, we were in the, in the preparation for it, we collected some statistics that tell us a little bit about participation during the year. There's only so much you can get from looking at quantitative data. There's obviously a qualitative aspect, but I can show you a few numbers. So let's go to the next slide, please. So we looked at the amount of email that our IETF participants are sending. If we compare between this year and last year, we have a little bit more email traffic than we did last year. So perhaps people are stuck in their homes. They're actually doing a, a little bit more IETF email than they did last year. But overall, if we compare year to year, this seems like a fairly healthy metric that we aren't, we aren't losing the traction, at least in the email discussion due to COVID. Then we can go to the next one. So this one is internet drafts posted, and this is for all internet drafts. So it includes revisions of existing documents. And again, here what we see is we're, we're sort of roughly on par with, with twenty nineteen, a little bit below in the July, August, September timeframe. And also again, here, at the end of the year, there's some seasonality to this because we have a deadline before each IETF meeting three times a year, by which people need to submit their documents in order, technically in order to be considered during the meeting. So that's why you see some fluctuation in this. But again, overall, this, this metric, I think, tells us that our participation rate in terms of document, new documents being posted is, hasn't dipped too much. And then if we look at the last one, there's just one more. So this is for brand-new internet drafts. We, we call zero-zero drafts because that's the version number that gets allocated to them. So in this case, we, we have seen a bit of a dip. So if we look from the, the COVID period onward, you know, we certainly have a gap when we compare to last year. Again, we don't really know how the, the end of the, this year will play out. We have, it looks like the trend is changing a little bit for us. So we'll have to, you know, continue to watch this. And the other caveat with all of this data is just that we're only doing a two-year comparison. And so it's possible that there's actually a more substantial fluctuation in this if we looked back at further years. But this is just what we were able to, to compile thus far. So on the whole, in terms of the numbers, the participation rate we think is, is actually quite good. We've had also fairly robust registrations for each of the, the meetings during COVID. And you know, part of that has to do, I think, with, you know, the ability for people to join remotely when they, they couldn't necessarily have done so previously, depending on time zones and so on. So that's all been good. You skipped my thank you slide, Gonzalo, which was like actually the main event here. I, I wanted to say, you know, express my genuine appreciation for the work that this board has done throughout my tenure as IETF chair. I think this might be the last time that I make one of these presentations because I'm stepping down in March. I'm not sure when, when the next board meeting is. But in particular, for the agreement that the LLC board and the ISOC board were able to reach as far as the on, ongoing funding support for the IETF LLC. And even more in particular, the matching program for the endowment. Some of you, I think, have, have been, you know, around ISOC and the IETF way back to the beginning of the endowment. I mean, I was participating in the IETF, but I wasn't a part of its creation. But for me personally, it goes back many years now of trying to bootstrap the fundraising for that. And so I just wanted you all to know how much I appreciate the seriousness that, that you approached that topic with. And I'm just so grateful that we were able to, to reach an agreement. And I'm really hopeful for the, the future fundraising efforts on the IETF side. Now we have a huge, huge incentive to get the ball rolling there and for, you know, a really worthy cause for, for the internet and for the world. So you know, thank you so much for your collaboration on that.
Yeah, thank you, Alyssa. So I, I think we were very pleased with, with the agreement. I mean, the operational funds, we, we hope really that, you know, they, they can basically cover everything that was kind of, you know, planned for, for the near future in, in the next six years. We, we didn't also, we, we didn't want to have a too short agreement either, so that you guys can plan strategically and all that. And we thought that six years was kind of hitting the sweet spot. So that was good. And then, yeah, I mean, it, it gives not only the IETF a big incentive to, to raise funds, but also gives incentives to other organizations to basically give funds to the IETF when, when there's an amplifier there. So we really hope that, you know, you guys basically get those thirty million dollars because, you know, you managed to, to raise all that. So, so let, let's hope for that. I think Pepper was saying something.
No, I, I, yeah, I just wanted to also thank Alyssa for her leadership at the IETF and helping, you know, with the LLC and restructuring. But more generally, your leadership at IETF on a lot of issues. And before that, you know, especially going back to the iron transition. So it's been really essential. And greatly appreciated from the whole, the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you, Pepper. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, thanks a lot for all these four years that you've been basically putting, you know, energy into that. And we know sometimes it's a thankless job. So, so, you know, we, we appreciate it. I mean, because we understand what it takes to, to do all that. So yeah, again, thanks a lot for, for basically, you know, driving the, the organization in, in, you know, basically during, during these four years. Any more comments? I don't see any. Okay, Mike.
I, I just wanted to take a minute, just less than a minute, just to echo the gratitude that we all have for Alyssa's leadership over this period of time. It's been exemplary, you know. From now on, we'll tell future chairs, why don't you, why aren't you as good as Alyssa? So they'll have to bear that burden, but that won't be your problem.
I'm glad. I'm glad that's not your problem.
Exactly.
A lot of legacy at the IETF, but I appreciate the kind words. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, perfect. Thank you. So again, thanks a lot, Alyssa. And well, I mean, even though maybe this is your, your last time presenting to the ISO board, we will, we will keep in touch as usual. And, and, you know, we'll, we'll see each other in, in, you know, different events. Okay, so thanks a lot, Alyssa. Absolutely.
Take care.
Take care. Bye-bye. With that, we move into any other business, any other business from anyone.
Did it happen again? Did the voice come out or did I solve the problem?
No, you solved the problem, actually. Now I, I don't hear this, you know, strong cricket.
It's the electrical current that's, you know, charging my laptop.
Oh, I see.
It's interfering with the signal.
Okay, but at least we, we managed to resolve it. So thank you, Wally.
So there's something I got from this meeting.
Exactly. Exactly. Okay, perfect. So hearing no AOB, then I move to adjourn. Okay, Pepper, seconds. Thank you. The meeting is closed.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.